I'm going to call to order the March 14th meeting of the Royal Oak City Commission. We'll begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Colow, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Today is National Write Down Your Story Day, and I find that very fitting for the theme of any city meeting. Anytime we gather, we're writing a portion of our city history together, not just here at the table, but everyone that takes part in the process. There are countless residents, volunteers, and city staff who come together every day to make our community a place we all want to live, raise kids, and grow old. This is the place we want to be, and our story's all written as one. Today, we're memorializing the story of the Hammers, a couple who escaped slavery in Kentucky and traveled the Underground Railroad to Michigan, where in 1857, they become one of the founding families of our city. The great American poet, L. Maranda, asks us, "When we're gone, who remembers your name? Who keeps your flame? Who tells your story?" Well, today, we're telling their story, and together, we'll keep on telling more. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Colow.
Well, you only have one shot. I'll keep it going.
Oh, no. Started today with the approval of the agenda.
You move first or you move?
Motion by Commissioner Dubak, second by Commissioner Hunt. Discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we've got an agenda. Now moving on to public comment. Now is the time set aside to allow the public to address the commission on city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. The public comment portion of this meeting is intended to give citizens the opportunity to address the city commission on city-related issues. I do ask that comments be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you are here to speak tonight, I ask that you wait until you're recognized by me, the Mayor Protem, and then state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. We have a timer at the podium that will help you keep track of your time. Just as a reminder that there are no public hearings tonight, and this is the only time to address the city commission on agenda items. All right, who wants to go first? Yes, please, go ahead.
I'm just here, my name's Karen Jones, been in Royal Oak for 55 years, and I'm just wanting to encourage the city commission to not approve the Gatsby cannabis company close to the Oakland Schools Technical Center. That's it.
Is that mic working? Thank you. Is that mic working?
Yes.
Can you hear it back there?
No.
Judy Green. Judy, you want to see if the button's pushed?
Check, check.
Oh, there we go. Still no? All right, who's next? Yes, Mr. Miller.
Bob Muller, lifelong citizen of Royal Oak. I want to speak on the Hamer-Finch-Wilkins Park. I'm the president of the Royal Oak Historical Society. We've been doing research on the Hamer family, and I thought possibly putting some of these items into the record would be worthwhile. I'm going to sort of read this, and I normally don't speak that way, so I may stumble, so excuse that. "The Hammers and their descendants have lived in Royal Oak for at least..." Already stumbled. "The Hammers and their descendants have lived in Royal Oak on at least a portion of the property that their original member purchased." He purchased it in 1862. In our research with pioneer families that settled during the first 50 years, this is the only family with someone still on a piece of the original property. That alone makes this an unbelievably special family. From the early 20th century until the Civil Rights Act in 1968, many of the homes in Royal Oak had restricted deeds. In fact, in the museum, we have a copy of a publication called Royal Oak: A City of Homes, printed in 1939, available at the city manager's office, that clearly states Royal Oak is 99% white. The world has changed just a little bit. With those restricted deeds, for most of the 20th century up until 68, if the Hammers had sold their land, they might not have been able to buy it back. So certainly, a different situation than we have today. Henry and Elizabeth Hamer escaped slavery, took the Underground Railroad to Windsor in 1857. Their first child was born there. They wished to come back and live in the United States, a risky option. There were many slave catchers on the streets of Detroit. Henry started wandering north of Detroit, looking for a small community far away from the big city, which we were at that time, where it would be safe for his family. He felt Royal Oak, or Chase Corners, actually, 13 and crooks, was the place. He rented some land, he built a cabin, he went and got his family and brought them here. By the 1860 census, he is listed as a farmer. By the 1870 census, he is listed as a tilemaker. He was employed by Almond Starr at the Brick and Tile Works. They farmed most of the time they also had the property. He had six more children, I'm sorry, five more children, all born in the city of Royal Edna and Samuel Finch, stepping up to their grandchildren, lived in the home until 1983 and 1979, when they died. To give an idea, Edna, who lived into her 90s, seemed to be important enough, the Tribune has numerous articles at her yearly birthday parties, and listed who attended, and they were the names like the Hillsingers and so forth, important families of the time in Royal Oak, that are going to this lady's birthday party. She was somebody in this city that people noticed and thought highly of. Samuel, her brother, played football for Union School, our high school at the time, where OCC is today, on the 1915 team. Interesting, we looked at the photo, and it was pointed out to me that back then, only people on defense wore helmets. He was wearing a helmet, and we know he played the position of tackle. So we know he played tackle, and he was on the defensive part of this team. This pioneer family has persisted in our community for over 160 years. Having a park named for them, a family that came here because this was a safe community, I feel is very appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Yes.
Hi, I'm Uriel Versaghi, curator, Royal Oak Historical Society Museum, and you all have to come and see us. And we are getting our next exhibit ready. It's called Royal Oak Homes, and so we're going to have a ton of homes on display in Royal Oak. But meanwhile, right now, we have Women's History Month on display, so ladies, come on out. But I just want to say thanks to Lakeisha, because without her coming to visit us and to be a part of us, we would not have some of the photographs and some of the documentation we have. We had a couple of very small three-ring binders with her family's history in it, but she has added an enormous amount of history to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Versaghi. Who's next? Oh, I said, I just said, thank you. Anybody? Yes.
Hi, John Davidson, 118 Crane Avenue, and I'm here to speak in support of renaming the park as well. When Judy started showing me information about the Hamer family several weeks ago, I was very excited about this, and she's really been, I think, very excited to share this story of this incredible family of pioneers in Royal Oak. So I think it's incredibly appropriate and something I really support to do. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Mr. Woods.
Good evening. I am up for just a quick announcement, just kind of a fun thing, and we are honored to be on the agenda with the Hamer-Finch-Wilkins Park, and want to let everybody know that there, people who are watching at home, we have complimentary tacos for the city of Royal Oak. If you want to come down to City Hall and make it by, we'll extend it to 8:45. And for family members in support of the parks, please enjoy, and it's just a pleasure to share the agenda with you this evening. That's all I got. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Woods. Everybody get that free tacos on Mr. Woods down here at City Hall? Anybody else? Go ahead.
Sorry to get off that topic. Just here to say that I'm asked, I want to know if you have read the...
Can I get your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Phyllis Selter in North Lafayette. If you happen to have read the local paper, the middle section of it this past week, it was pretty big, you can't miss it. But anyway, aside from the maneuvering and biased interpreting of zoning areas, people are going to be growing this at home. Now, we can have some empty buildings after these guys leave, and it's just a thought. Anyway, you're really not listening to the residents here when they don't want it in their area, they don't want it at their school, and I think you need to respect that. So that's pretty much all I have to say, that think of the residents, where they live, and what they want, and that would be a nice change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Selter. Okay, anybody? All right, that upholds public comment and bringing the meeting back up here. Item six, the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull something off the consent agenda today?
Yes, I'd like to pull item, which one is it? K.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Colow?
Item B, please.
Sorry, B is a boy.
B is a boy.
B and K, anybody else? Okay, with that, the consent agenda now consists of: City Commission meeting minutes February 28th, 2022; oops, confirmation of city manager's appointment to the Downtown Development Authority; claims March 8th and March 11th, 2022; approval of purchase orders; declaration of disposal of surplus property; approval of program year 2022, high-intensity drug trafficking area subrecipient agreement; special vet permit run Royal Oak, June 12th, 2022; approval of standard resolution 5, special assessment paving of public alley west of Evergreen; award of contract, Woodward Avenue tribute structure repairs; receive and file non-action items, the February 2022 investment report. Is there a motion? Commissioner Prush?
I'm over.
Motion by Commissioner Prush, second by Commissioner Colow. Any discussion? A call for the vote? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, Commissioner Colow, B.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. This is the approval of the mayoral appointments to various boards and committees. I pulled it tonight, just because I want to recognize, we have some members in the audience. Lauren Jusinski is here, and I'm not sure if Mr. McCall's here, but it's, you know, just I want to say thank you to everyone who comes out, you know, this is a great night, it's a night, once again, we're writing our own story, right? Like, you're starting your story tonight in your city service, so we're all writing it together. So I just want to continue my invocation there, but thank you to everyone who chooses to serve our community. With that, I move to this approval.
Motion by Commissioner Colow, second by Commissioner Prush. Any discussion? I'll just say thank you to both of them as well, and Mr. Jusinski, I'll see you in two weeks at Library Board. Nothing further? Call for the vote? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, Commissioner Douglas, item K.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I'm going to ask Mr. Brake to tell us a little bit more about the proposed contract here. I specifically am looking at language that says that we are hiring a public relations firm to assist with defining methods to engage stakeholders for our, to engage people to figure out what the people think of how we want to spend our Rescue Funds Act. And I'm trying to find out what defining methods to, how defining methods to engage differs from actual engagement. Mr. Brake.
Okay, so, good evening, Mayor Protem, and members of the city commission. As we discussed, the American Rescue Act, Plan Act program at the mid-February meeting, the consensus was that we wanted to do an involved and, to engage as much of the public in the conversation to give us input and the perspective, plan, spending plan to allocate the federal stimulus dollars. By involving the consultant will help us to craft that message and to engage a greater number of individuals. It's not just a matter of if by doing an online survey, we have experts that will come up with the appropriate language, but to bring individuals out, that we have the greatest number of participation, that we do that through social media, web messaging, email, as well as possible media relations as well, that we get the word out to bring the greatest numbers of individuals that have participated in that engagement process. That's where I see Siren PR. We have worked with them, they work currently with the DDA. Judy has worked closely with them, and more recently, have signed a small contract with them, but now this is an extension of that service, and specifically on this project alone, that they will be focusing their attention. So I'm highly confident that they will be very effective, they have done excellent work for the DDA, and this is an amount not to exceed, so it's based on whatever hourly services that they perform, and if it's less than that, then we will not spend the entire amount. So I hope I answered your question.
I'm going to follow up, if I may. So, community engagement, you develop a plan, and then you implement the plan, and the plan is making lists of people and contacting them and sending out messages and following up and making RSVP lists and booking a room and putting out the flip charts and setting up the PowerPoints. Is Siren PR going to do all of that?
No, no, that's, that part, the latter half, as far as the room setup and the like, there's expertise that we already have in my office. But as far as crafting that message and helping us and enticing or engaging the greatest number of individuals, they will be assisting in that regard. But as far as meeting logistics, setting up flip charts and that sort of examples that you've given, no, no, that'll be done at a staff level. So I'm looking at high-level communication services of where I want to engage them and set that at a high enough amount that we likely will not exceed that dollar amount, but nevertheless, as we go down this journey, that we make sure that we do the best possible job of communicating that message.
So, and you're right, and it's always good to have an outside pair of eyes looking at things, but my concern here is that I just don't see, I mean, we've got an open-ended contract here, which is basically worth 85 hours of work, and I don't see defining methods to engage stakeholders as requiring 85 hours, and I'm kind of disinclined to enter into that open-ended a contract, at least not without a more specific description of what they're going to do.
Okay, fair enough. Here's what, if I bring back to you, that they have some much more definitive definitions, would that satisfy?
Yes.
Okay.
Eighty-five, I mean, this gives them sort of carte blanche to do 85 hours of work, not all of which is the actual work of engagement, and I just think that's a little too open-ended for my taste.
Okay, so, again, keep in mind that this is, they're not determining this, we are the client, and so that's under my direction. So that's, I'm not saying the carte blanche and do as you may, rather, let's come up with a highly effective plan. But that's something that I can bring back, and perhaps, if you want to table it until the next meeting, we'll bring it back until that time.
I move to table this item. I'm sorry, not table, that's not the word. Postpone this.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Second by Commissioner Prush. Further discussion? Let's go.
Typically, that's done by a future date or a future event, so, under Rocker's rules of order.
Is it, is, our, our next meeting is a week away, is that reasonable?
Correct. Well, you can have something prepared, it may be the night of that you're receiving, you know, what that outline is.
Okay, then if it's amenable to others, I'll postpone until the 21st.
Okay.
Commissioner Colow?
Yeah, so, just to add to that conversation really quick, I also like, in this report, to understand why Guide House, who's gained half a million dollars, isn't performing this task. I mean, this seems to be something that we've already contracted out, so I am very confused as to why we're paying another $16,000, on top of the fact, Siren has a $6,000 contract with the DDA already, and I'm not quite sure that this is the best solution for us, so even if it came back in a week, I would probably vote no at this point, so it'd be really interesting to see why Guide House isn't doing this.
Okay, so Guide House's accountants, they're, they work with compliance issues, they aren't that skilled at being public relations professionals and communications in that regard. So this is the professional expertise that I bring to the table, this is my recommendation of carrying this out. So what I heard at the commission meeting on February 16th is that you wanted a robust communication process, and that we engage the public. So to ask someone that's not within their expertise, just because of the dollar amount, I don't want to set an unrealistic expectation. So I think I'll forward, follow up with, you know, here is the strategy that we will use, and we should have that ready, that's by meeting time on the 21st, and present that to you, so.
So, so two more things, I guess, in response to that, finding Guide House's accountants, but we hired them to be our consultants to do this, to find expertise, and in fact, they stood up here at that time and said, "We will find the people to project manage all these projects for you," and that's not because they're accountants, it's because this is what we've engaged them to got us through the whole process here. So that was my understanding of that. I'm also not, you know, when looking at what this brings, I don't think we're ready to start public, you know, public engagement. I think we made it pretty clear at the table here that what Guide House presented wasn't a finished product at all to go to public engagement. I think we decided that was kind of some high-level items there, so I'm not particularly sure it's ready.
Okay, so, look for information forthcoming later on this week, that we have strategic planning, and that'll be an element that's part of that. So, again, you assigned me to manage this, this is a recommendation that I'm making to you.
So then, if I could, I'm going to make a motion also to move this, amend this motion, to move this to the first meeting in April, simply because I don't think it's fair that we get something the night of a meeting and vote on it without paying some thought into it. I'd rather give you time to look at it. So I move to amend the motion to the first meeting in April.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Colow, second by Commissioner Douglas. Any further discussion? Commissioner Dubak?
I understand the questions being asked, I think the city managers often just answer those questions. I don't think this level of micromanagement is productive or helpful, I think we need to start getting active and getting these dollars out into the community and get these projects moving, and I don't see any benefit in delaying, so I'm going to oppose this motion.
So I have a follow-up question myself. So is Guide House involved in the engagement process? I was reviewing what we had talked about with Guide House when we first engaged them, and it looked like they had said that part of what they were going to do was the, was the community engagement and the engagement with the commission, and I just wondered, are they in fact involved in this part of it or not?
They will be, this is a team effort. And so, where their expertise is interpreting the federal legislation, where can you spend the money and where can't? Because in the end result is that when we report the dollars that are expended, we have to be able to appoint, point to a specific provision within the federal regulations that dictate how you can spend the money. It's not a, where it's unfeathered dollars, there's very, very specific criteria. So in that regard, when we do get into open-ended input, if someone says, "Look, this wasn't on your list of items, but may I suggest this?" And if we are to consider something, that we have to be able to point back to the regulations, say, "Is this an allowable expenditure?" So that's where Guide House's expertise is in that regard.
All right, so I did understand that part of it, because they came, their presentation was fairly clear on that piece, but it did seem like, when I was reviewing the contract, that they had said that the same way they had done interviews with the commission and staff, that they would also be involved in the community engagement portion of it. So in terms of all the things that Commissioner Douglas mentioned that are leading up to and preparing for and holding this community engagement, are, is Guide House involved in that, or are they just at the end saying, yes, eligible, no, ineligible?
No, leading up to that, they would have best practices of working with other clients in that regard, to help prepare the information. Again, it's a team effort, that, so they will be involved in that each step of the way, and they perhaps may be even monitoring and would be present when we do the in-person sort of activities. So I think that would be helpful, you know, in that regard. But again, that their expertise is not setting up focus groups, town hall meetings, or those type of activities. They can provide us with the expertise that leads up to that, but it's actually engaging in that process, that's where collectively each of us bring that level of expertise, and I look at Ms. Davidson, she knows where I'm going with this, that oftentimes, you know, in the past, when there's has been shretts that have been put together, there's many different elements that the staff will be involved in that. So give me the team, and we'll make it happen.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, so we have a motion on the table from Commissioner Colow to amend the previous motion to make it the April 11th meeting?
Sure.
So that's, that's the motion in front of us. Call for the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? No. Can I see hands on the nose? All right, I can do math. Motion passes. All right, now it brings us to the full motion, which is to, now it's just to move the same thing, to postpone this item until the April 11th meeting. Any discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to item seven. Historic District Study Committee requests to study and set up Boulevard Bridges for Historic Designation and Preservation.
So, Madam Mayor Protem, there's a number of individuals that are here, present this evening, so Carol Schrenger, who's part of my staff, we also have Leslie Snow, Rob Duchene, Tamis Donaldson, and Patrick Andres, that is present, that I guess will be co-presenters on this particular agenda item.
Take it away.
Thank you so much for having us. Again, Leslie Snow?
And I think Rob Duchene will be coming up in a moment. But basically, our request is for you all to consider our group studying the history of the bridges on Vincetta. We've done a little bit of research on that, and we do think it would most likely qualify according to the state standards that also follow national standards. So based on the history, not only the age, but also the historical significance and the architectural significance. So that's our, our request. I don't know if you had any questions about kind of some of our research, or, yeah.
Anybody got any questions? Leslie?
Yeah.
What's your timetable?
I guess the request would be that we're asking you guys to ask us to study the bridges, so I guess it's whatever timetable the commission sees fit, and then our research, like when we studied and designated, or helped to designate the farmer's market, that took about a year. It really kind of varies, but putting the, you know, doing the research, putting the report together, sending it to the state, waiting to hear from them, could be about a year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Commissioner Hunt?
Sure.
I'm just curious, what does the research process look like for this, and are there funds expended for it? What does that look like?
We do the research, so our group of volunteers, we conduct research from the internet, through the county, through our wonderful historical museum, there's several reference books that were written by Royal Oak residents or groups that provide some information, and so we conduct the research on the history of, typically, we've done properties, so we'll conduct the history of the property or the resource, the bridges in this case, as well as... as well as other architectural, or we have architects on our team. So I guess they know the proper wording, but you know, the coordinates or the location, the legal definition of the structures, architectural descriptions and significance. The biggest brunt is really kind of the history of the property or the structure. So in this case, having been, I believe that the neighborhood was platted in 1915 or 1916, and we have photos that those bridges were there very early on, and were even electrified at one point. And that it, the history, the two founders of the neighborhood combined their names into Vincetta. And one of the founders of that neighborhood, his son designed the Washington Square Building. So there's a kind of a notable names connection there, as well as the age of the bridges, and just the unique charm that it provides to Vincetta, which was marketed as like a very swanky neighborhood at the time. We have advertisements kind of touting that. So it's something very unique, and especially covering the remnants of the Red Run, which was important for the area. So that's a little taste of the research that we've done, but that's kind of what we would formally put into a report and following the standards of the, basically, the National Park Service.
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. You know, they here all coming out tonight. This is pretty exciting. Do you know the history of why, so this is, you know, there's a lot of good research here, but do you know what happened that prevented this from moving forward in the past?
I will let my colleague, Rob Duchaine, perhaps speak on that. I know he was on the committee when this was first brought up. So I don't know if you want to speak on that.
I wouldn't have brought this up if you hadn't asked. But yeah, we were well underway in doing the research to have the bridges designated when we were told that it would be inconvenient in the wintertime for them to be cleared of snow, that the fellows who operate the plows were opposed to that. And for that reason, that's the reason I was told. For that reason, the idea was deleted.
Okay, very well. Hopefully you can figure out where around that.
Hopefully. I really have not much to add. I think Leslie did a real good job. We, you've got some bases to cover. The architectural significance, which they seem to have been done in 1930. The area was platted in 1918. The reason for the delay seems to be that they put in a big sewer pipe in the 20s, and it created a mound, so they decided to cover it. But they kept the bridges. But if you dug down underneath the bridges, you'd find a huge sewer pipe. Interestingly, Mr. Muller, who's a wonderful resource, this sort of thing, told me on Saturday that there had been a fifth bridge that was just east of Woodward. But that has been removed without any trace left. He also told me an interesting little tidbit, which was that it was designed with the idea that a Model T would be able to cross it comfortably. To me, they're a remnant of a charming older time, you know, a one-way bridge, big enough for one car to pass at a time. Certainly, nobody would do that today, but I think they're just a charming remnant of Royal Oak's past. And we hope you'll give us the green light to go ahead and find out more stuff.
Commissioner Purush?
A couple of things. We live within a stone's throw of one of those bridges. We live on Woodsboro, just off of Vincetta.
Right.
It's entertaining to watch a cement truck pull up to one of those bridges and just sit there for maybe five minutes, trying to figure out, "How am I going to get across this bridge? Because what I need to do is get to the house on the other side." They usually go around the block and approach it straight. But there have been trucks that have tried to cross it, and so the bridges have been damaged over time. There was a time, probably back in the 80s, one, I don't know what went over the bridge at Mayfield, and took out a significant portion of the bridge top part. And it was not repaired right away. The neighborhood asked the city about it, and the city at the time, and the city engineer at the time, which was a couple of engineers back before Holly, didn't think that it should be repaired at all, that the bridges should be removed because they were a safety hazard and because city trucks couldn't significantly plow them in the winter with regular plows and so on and so forth. And so it wasn't repaired. So the two neighbors who were on either side of Mayfield, facing Vincetta, Dick Lomas, who was a dentist on one side, and Bob Weber, who used to own Weber Greenhouses, 10 mile before it was acquired by the freeway, decided they were going to repair it by themselves. And they did.
I can confirm that story.
They bought the wood frames and the correct cement, and they fixed that bridge. And they warned everybody, "Don't touch it until it dries," and that kind of stuff. So, but then, now it's been damaged again. I don't know what hit it about a year ago. There's some cracks in the part of it that they repaired.
Yeah.
I don't think it was, I don't think, it happens.
And they do need to be maintained.
Yeah, for sure. Two other things, very quickly. When we bought our house, we inherited from the previous owners a full title abstract of our lot that goes all the way back to when the land was acquired from the British in the Northwest Territories. It goes back that far. It has deeds and restrictions and so on that are applicable to our lot, but most of it applies to the entire subdivision. And there's references in the deeds, especially the early ones, where the lot owners were assessed for various improvements to the subdivision. I don't know whether the bridges were part of that, but it might be something that you might want to take a look at.
Well, thanks.
I know that they installed a drainage system because the area was basically wetland before they subdivided it.
It was a creek bed.
It was a creek.
It was the Red Run.
And the area, we have a big drain in our backyard that was installed before the city was a city. There, we have, the city has no records of it. That drains, the water table is very high, and it drains, and I'm sure it goes into the Red Run. But you're welcome to borrow that abstract if you think it would help.
I'd love to.
Okay. As long as you, you can do whatever.
Oh, I'll take care of it.
The other thing, unfortunately, is that there has been some bad history associated with those bridges. In the early 80s, and I can't remember exactly when it happened, there were a group of four young teenagers who had been drinking, came back into the subdivision after midnight one night at a high rate of speed, tried to turn and go over that Cedar Hill Bridge. And there were four in the car, and only three survived. Yeah, there was, one of the, one of the young men died. So they can be a safety hazard. That doesn't, you know, excuse the behavior of the young men. But on the other hand, there is a tragedy associated with the Cedar Hill Bridge.
No, thank you.
So that's, that's all I have about. But you're welcome to borrow the abstract if you think it would help.
I might take you up on that.
It's very, it's very thin and papery, but it's got good stuff in it, I think.
Muriel raised, taught me how to treat documents.
Okay.
I've been schooled by the best.
She will take very good care of it.
Yes.
Commissioner Cole?
I'll make a motion.
Do you have any motion? Commissioner Cole?
Sorry, I thought we were still on questions. So with that, I'll make a motion to authorize the Royal Oak Historical District Study Committee, that's a mouthful, to begin research on the study of the Vincetta Boulevard Bridges for potential historic designation.
Motion by Commissioner Cole, second by Commissioner Duba. Any further discussion? So this is great. We look forward to finding out what you're hearing, but at least I do. All in favor?
Well, Ms. Purush, I wanted to add, you can come to our meetings anytime you want. As a matter of fact, you can join if you'd like.
No, no, you can't steal our historian. We need her up here.
I'll lie. Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, go to it.
Thank you very kindly.
Thank you all so much. Thank you. Now, with item eight, approval of the naming committee recommendation, Hamer Finch Wilkins Park. Ms. Davidson?
Good evening, Commissioner. It's my great honor to tell you the history of the Hamer Finch Wilkins family. I'm so grateful that Bob did such a great job. So I can just kind of breeze through this. But these are some pictures to accompany some of the things that he said. So let's look at these. As he mentioned, the Hammers escaped slavery in Kentucky, made their way to, at first, Windsor, Ontario, where they had Charles, or Charlie, as he's called in the 1860 census. Elizabeth was a house slave, and Henry was a plantation slave. This is a little map here. I'm not sure how they made it, but gives you an idea. They risked their freedom, as Bob said, to come back to the United States. They settled in a log cabin on 12 Mile Road. The land was rented, but Henry worked diligently at the Star Brick and Tile family, or tile factory, rather, to afford his own property. To the left here, we have Almond Star. He's born in approximately 1828. And to the right, we have Elizabeth. She's born in 1824, so she's about four years older than Almond Star. And that's her with two of her six children. And this photo is courtesy of the Starr family album, which kind of shows you their relationship with the Stars. Here's us, 1860 census, and we see Henry, Elizabeth, and Charlie. He's three. Henry's 41, Elizabeth is 30. That's in 1860. And Henry's listed as a farmer. 10 years later, we can see in this, this one, they've got, now they've got five children. And I think what's cool about this is, this is the 1870 census. This shows Henry is listed as a tile maker right above them. So like, in the 1870s, people didn't have addresses. You can't, you don't see addresses or street number. They were just, you know, the census taker just visited them, neighbor to neighbor. So you can see Almond Star, and then you see the Hammers. So they obviously live very close to each other. And let's keep going here. Then eventually, they are landowners. This is an 1872 plat that will show, I'm going to just zoom in here. That is their land there. It's a triangular piece of land. This building right here, where the little green dot is, that's Planet Fitness, I think. The dotted area here, this is the property that still is in their family. I thought this was really cool. This is, they had a relative that died. Unfortunately, the same day that the Tigers won the World Series in 1935, the Hammers had a son that was in a really bad, was hit by a car. But in his obituary, which I'll show you next, I just wanted to read this quote. It's talking about his significance. It's a front-page story, and it said, "They," meaning the Hammers, "bought the land and turned to the task of operating a small produce farm. Although they were one of the first Negro families in southeastern Michigan, they thrived. They took a definite and honorable place in the small, unincorporated community, and they reared a family which saw and helped Royal Oak grow to a city of 25,000 in population." And that is a front-page story on the Tribune, where the arrow is where this story, and here's the story right here. So when the Hammers, the Hammers were like front-page news. The, Henry and Elizabeth are both buried at Royal Oak Cemetery, in very close proximity to the Almond Star family, which I think, again, highlights their unique and very special relationship. And this list here is a list of all the Finch, Hammers, and Wilkins that are buried at Royal Oak Cemetery, and there's, there are a lot of them. And I wanted to just, I have some pictures that kind of highlight some of the things that Bob said. This is, this is Henry's obituary, where he's described as a strictly honorable man who was a kind neighbor. This is when Ella dies. This is in 1932. This is when Lucius, I hope I said his name right, died in 1935. He was hit by a car or a bus, can't remember his, by vehicle anyways. This is 1942. Again, these are all front-page headlines. These are not buried in the back of the paper with the paid obituaries. These are news articles. That's how prominent their family was. Here's the 1916 Royal Oak High School football team that beat the Maples twice. Yay, Royal Oak. And here is, this is Samuel Finch, right here in the back row. Here's 19, another, here's another article from 1954. Again, this is headline news. Here's 1978. This is Samuel celebrating his 80th birthday, and that's his sister with him. This is the story that Bob was telling us. This is, this is Elmyra Finch, and this is her 88th birthday, and it lists all the gifts she's given. These are very special people. This one is my favorite because this is, this is a house in Royal Oak that was moved right across the street from my house. I live at 118. At 119, Mrs. Elizabeth Hamer delivered a baby as a midwife. And this is just a little story about how she was from Kentucky. The family's just recalling the significance of this house, but I look at that every day, and I look at it with new eyes now. This is in 1996, when they did the plaque at the Royal Oak and St. Mary's Cemetery with some of the, this is a story that's interviewed, on some of the Finch family. And then, this gentleman right here was a big deal athlete. So even up into the 2000s, they're in the newspaper. And I believe he was the homecoming king of Kimball High School. So he is indeed royalty. Case you, in case you have any questions about that. And then I just wanted to just talk briefly about, this is the property they own, and this is the park that we are hoping, this is Beechwood Park. It's a very, very small park. I wish it was bigger. But we think it has a lot of synergy because it is so close in proximity to the original land. It's a triangle, just like the original plot of land. And right now, it has zero amenities, and we're hoping to change that. Here's like an aerial view. This is Crooks, this is Walnut, and this is Beechwood. That's what the park looks like, and we're hoping to dramatically change its appearance. And this is just 1956, when the park was dedicated. It was dedicated at the same time Lawson, Pioneer, Maxwell, and Kenwood Parks were. The last three, Beechwood, Maxwell, and Kenwood Park, they're just all simply named after streets that they're next to. Those are not families. We're not, we're not dismissing like the Beechwood family. There is no Beechwood family. And then the other thing that's really cool is I, I looked through minutes to try to see like if they ever, you know, if this park was ever in the news, if there's something significant about it, because I, you know, I want to make sure that something important didn't happen there that we didn't mention. And really, the only time it was ever mentioned was in the mid 60s. There were so many kids in the neighborhood that they wanted the city commission to remove the "no ball" plane sign. And the city commission said no. So they put, I think they put up a fence. They weren't so worried about kids running into the street. They were worried about balls being hit into, and hitting cars, I guess, driving down Crooks Road. And this is not, this is not, I'm not saying this is what we're going to do, but this is kind of how we're thinking, is talking to the descendants, is we would like to change that. It's like .3 acres. We'd like to change it into like a reflective garden. We'd like to use natural plants as much as possible, have it be very environmentally friendly so we don't need to mow it anymore. And we obviously would like some sort of plaque talking about the Hammer family. And let me see what else here. Oh, and then Oakland County's been really great in looking up the, the land. And it was, it was, it was like homestead, or I don't know very much of this, but in 1824, the federal government just gave it to Joseph and Jeremiah Chase. And then the Chase families deeded the land to Henry Hammer for $550. And then in 1872, James and Ann McKibben also gave Henry Hammer some land for $75. And then in 1888, it shows that Henry, who was in poor health the last, about the last decade of his life, he decade of his life, he deeded the property to his wife Elizabeth, which makes sense. And then, and then we have wills and stuff that show that the property goes to Finch, and it, and there's been a series of Finch-to-Finch conveyances since 1955. So with that, I just would like to introduce John Wenland. He's on the naming committee, and he's passed the naming committee unanimously. And then, Aaron is here, in case you have any questions about Beechwood Park. We also went to the Parks and Recreation and Senior Services Advisory Committee, passed there unanimously too. And, and then, if you have any questions, these are all, these are all the descendants, and I'd love for Keisha to say a couple words, if she'd like to.
My name's Lakeisha Morrison. I'm from Royal Oak, obviously, and my family is from Royal Oak as well. I feel like this is destined, because I was just here a month ago to the day, to celebrate Black History Month in Royal Oak. So I feel like this is an important milestone for my family and for our city, along with people of color, and the people that pretty much brought the city together. And, you know, I would like to thank everyone for the opportunity to speak. I did see Mr. Duchesne. Hi. I went to school with his daughters. So I just want to say, thank you for all who have put their hands in the pot to help this happen, from the Historical Museum, all the way to Judy. Judy's like, angel with wings in the back of her arms. I swear she is. But I just want to say thank you again, and, you know, having this park named after my ancestors and my family, and, you know, the Wilkins. I always tell everyone, I started as a Hammer, and I ended as a Morrison. So there's a gap in there that will tell a story for my ancestors and my children to come, and my grandchildren to come. And I'm just so appreciative of the opportunity, and I think I, I give a lot of this pride to, not only the community, but also to my parents that raised me in Royal Oak, and made sure we stayed in this bright community. And we're here to stay, and we plan on staying for a very long time, and I pray that my children and their children stay in Royal Oak as well, because, you know, we've got a title that we want to make sure we continue to have for years to come, and decades to come, and even centuries to come. I feel my ancestors and my blood, so this has been a great journey and a great ride, and I just love every moment of it, just opening up new books and new stories, and, you know, I don't think I would've gotten this far without my father, who passed away in 2020. But I also give a lot of thanks to the Historical Museum, that also like, sits down, and we just get so excited when we see something. And, you know, we, I, I just feel like, we've still got a lot of journey to unravel, to unwrap, and I eventually want to know, like, where from Africa they came, and, you know, did they have siblings? Did they have all these things? How scary was that, you know, escape from Kentucky all the way up to Canada, and then coming down to Royal Oak? So I encourage everyone to figure out their roots, and, you know, it's a fun thing to do. So I thank everyone for the opportunity, and hopefully you guys enjoy the new park. Hopefully, so.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis, and Ms. Morrison. Is Mr. Wenland planning to speak as well, or?
Would you like to, would you like to say a few words, John? Would you like to say a few words, John, on behalf of the naming committee?
Can we talk about this family again?
To the mic, speak to the mic, so we can hear you, please.
Some years ago, back when I lived on Gelpin Avenue, South of Webster and Crooks, my parents bought an acre of property, about a block away from the family here on Crooks Road. And then, my father would go downtown, and from time to time, he would find your grandfather waiting for the bus, there's a bus station in Webster and Crooks Road. And what he wanted, the bus driver to go to downtown Royal Oak, go to the library. At that time, the library was at the corner of Main and Fifth, where Star Park Coffee Shop is now. And before that, it was, I believe, was the bank. And, and from time to time, I'll be with my dad, and he would pick him up, and my dad had a very close relationship with your father, and I always remember that, and I didn't realize it. Years down the line, I would meet you, you guys. And what a surprise, what a pleasant one, when you came at that meeting, and to vote onto Buster Parker, you know. But I had some fond memories of your early King folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wenland. Does anyone have any questions for any of these fine people? Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Prosser. So there's a lot of names here, the Hammer, Finch, Wilkins family. And, you know, Judy, I know you've told me about this, but for everyone else, can we hear about all three of these names and their relevance in the hall court there?
Keisha, do you want to?
Yeah.
Go to the mic.
So obviously, we, actually, before Hammer, which we try not to talk about, because Henry and Elizabeth was, once upon a time, a, we think Robinson, and that was their slave name. And so, when they had to escape, they had to change their name, and they changed it to Hammer. We don't know why they picked Hammer, but obviously, that's when they started a family, and why not change that name to Hammer? And obviously, unchain themselves from Robinson. And then, from Hammer, they had six children. Only one of their female daughters had six children of herself, of her own, and she ended up being a Finch, marrying a Finch. And from being a Finch, she had six children, and only one of her daughters had children as well. And her name is Bessie, which is my great-grandmother. I never got the opportunity to meet her, but I hear that we kind of look like her, so. And from the Wilkins, Bessie, she had my grandfather, which is Stanley Wilkins, which was who he went to the bus stop with, and, you know, went to the library with. And my grandfather, who is Stanley Wilkins, had four children, and my father was a twin as well, and I'm a twin, so it runs deep in the family. And unfortunately, like I said, he passed away in 2020, but he had five children, Latoya, Candace, Taisha, myself, and Carvel, and that's where Wilkins is at. So I'm hoping that my brother will eventually get married and have some kids, that Wilkins will continue. So, yeah, those are the names. And I feel like every single last name means something to me, and it's very important for that to stay, so, yeah. And the triangle theory, everyone keeps saying, like, three. So three's a good number, so, I like that. And that's it?
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Clerk Collins, make sure that's in the record about getting married. Any further questions? Motions? Commissioner Dubak?
Sure. I will happily move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak, second by Commissioner Collo. Need further discussion? Call for the vote. Commissioner Dubak, sorry.
Sure. I just want to, thank you to everyone who contributed to this. I think everything's been said, that this is a really awesome recognition of an historic Royal Oak family, and I think everyone in the community is really going to appreciate this opportunity to learn more about them and establish the legacy for generations to come. So thank you all for making this happen.
Agreed. And this was an incredible history lesson tonight, so thanks to everyone who brought that forward, too. All right, now I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, this park's happening. Do you want a picture of them?
Do you like the picture? Can we get a picture of the whole family?
Yeah.
Well, we do have more family members, but maybe.
Where we go?
Some of the descendants of the Wilkins, so.
Okay. We'll get them all up here.
Stay here. Sure, we can solid.
I'm a fake mirror, you tell me.
Judy usually tells us what to do. There you go. Do we want?
And I would say, 90% of the kids all go to Royal Oak schools, and we are ready to go to Royal Oak schools, so we're there.
Put them on.
Everybody, look here.
Okay, with that, we are to the discussion of the potential 4th of July weekend downtown event, as requested by Commissioner Collo. This is Commissioner Collo, Mr. Frey.
Did you have anything? Okay, so I guess I'll kick it off, but there's been a request by Mr. Woods to host an event, a Taco Tequila event. I believe he's been working with the city's manager's office and the police department, so this is just an opportunity for us to hear about it, and get some information on
Okay, if there's an objection, I'll invite Mr. Woods up to speak.
Thank you. Before I speak, I just want to use this, this platform to invite Lakeisha and family, because we are about fun in the city of Royal Oak. So we have two events coming up, for sure. Rockin' Rides and Art Speeds and Eats, and your family will be our special guest at all events, complimentary rides, recognition, and the Art Speeds and Eats Foundation would like to work with Judy, who I know is step outside in making a contribution to the park as well, to help us get this going. So, congratulations. This will be a summer of fun. This continues, so I just wanted to start with, you know, with that mention.
That's perfect, and I want to interrupt you real quickly to say that on Rockin' Rides weekend, there's also going to be a Juteet celebration in Royal Oak for the first time, and Lakeisha's helping to plan it, so there could be some synergies there as well.
Let's get together and tie it all together, so, and we'll have some fun with it. And we, we want to work with the city manager's office and the commission on a, on a new favorable admission policy to the residents of Royal Oak as well. So we'll be bringing that, those ideas very, very shortly. So on this event, I want to thank Commissioner Collo for, for bringing this forward. We have a tricky timeline, and I wanted just to give the background on bringing this up for discussion. We wanted to make sure that the Winter Blast Festival came off to the, you know, to the approval of the city. So we had, this has been in the works, but there was a delay in bringing it, just because we thought it was tough to bring another event, when we all had a lot at stake and a lot of investment on behalf of the city. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank city staff, police, DPS, public relations, city manager's office, and Todd Fenn, just the collaboration on Winter Blast was a famous success, and just a lot of work when you bring a new event like that in. So we did not, there was a delay in wanting to bring this, and then, at the same time, we are in a tricky situation on getting this going, because we are competing for some sponsorship and getting taco trucks to commit. So that is why there is a little bit of haste in getting out there, because everybody is back at it in the event world. So there's been a little bit of push, and I am out of town for next week's meeting, so I just wanted to give that background before I say a couple words about the event. There was a true reason for the push. The DDA is voting on it Wednesday, and some members had wanted to hear from the DDA. So I just wanted to give that background publicly. Secondly, on the event, we want to take a slower weekend for the city, which is July 4th weekend, on the Friday through the Monday, and bring 35 taco trucks, bring in three stages of entertainment, bring in some fun theming from potential strolling mariachi bands in the streets of the city, to Cuba Libre Wrestling, to all sorts of fun thematic things. And this event, historically, has been in both Independence Township and Canterbury Village, and it has been successful. There also has been some operations issues with long lines for food and so forth, so I think the combination of its past success, the city being a great location to host events, and our background in our professional production and marketing, I think the combinations of its past success, the city being a great venue, and our track record will lead to a fantastic success. It is in the same footprint as Rockin' Rides, so we'll be using a familiar footprint that we've worked on logistically, that does not take up the blockage of Washington or Main Street, so it has the least impact on, on business. And it takes one less day of setup than Rockin' Rides, so it's less parking, you know, taken up, and less, again, less impact on businesses that might, may not have a direct benefit. So I guess I will say one more thing. I have spoken to the Royal Oak Restaurant Association. There is no objection. There, we've gotten a very positive letter from, from Kerry O'Neill, their president, on behalf of Rock on Third, and we've spoken to other restaurants who are favorable. The Restaurant Association is not putting out a letter of support, or, you know, or lack of support, just because they have members that feel differently about events in general, and that's a quote from Kerry. And then, lastly, with regard to preference, for downtown businesses, we will be offering the opportunity for Royal Oak restaurants to participate with guest tacos. So we've already heard that Luigi wants to do a guest taco, Bob from Levy's might do a guest taco, so it doesn't have to be Mexican-themed restaurants from Royal Oak that participate. And we will be providing a 30% discount compared to outside restaurants, as well as preferential location to anyone from Royal Oak that wants to participate. So we will have a favorable offer. I think we can really bring, you know, 30,000 to 40,000 people on a relatively slow weekend and some good excitement into the downtown. So that is the background. And again, our goal here is, we know there will not be a vote this evening, but as near future, you know, to allow us to, to move forward. I guess I will also say our special event permit was turned in, you know, last week as well, so it's in process, and we had a great meeting, and appreciate Chief Moore making time to have a meeting on Friday of last week with, with relative short notice. So we thank the police for their support there as well. So that, I think I'm open to, to questions. And again, just wanted to get this in front of you, in case we have the opportunity to be voted on next week, which would be helpful. I will, I will be out of town, and wanted to be here for any questions and get this, try and keep the process moving, as we are, you know, again, competing for restaurants and sponsors to, to help support and endeavor. We have asked for investment from the DDA, I should mention, and that investment will represent, you know, I would say, less than 25% of the overall budget. We will be coming strong. This will be a $300,000-plus event, invested into, you know, entertainment programming, tenting, insurance, security, et cetera, so, there you go.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? You're telling you.
You know, I'm here for you. Just to be clear, there's not a monetary ask from the city commission, correct?
There is not, no. There is not.
Thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
I think my question is for Chief Moore, if I may. This sounds like a great event, but we will just be coming off of Rockin' Rides, and then, six weeks later, will be approximately Art Speeds and Eats. Would this be taxing on, on your department, labor-wise? Would there be any issues with that? I understand that the event will have its own security, but this is going to bring a ton of people downtown.
Sure. You bring up a great question. I appreciate your, your thoughts on that. I'm confident that we can staff this event. It's the same footprint as Rockin' Rides, so we're comfortable in, in the resources that we put out for that event, and I think it would be a similar detail to provide police services for this Taco Fest, so no question, we could staff the, all the events.
Commissioner Dubak?
Chief, just to follow up on that, so we can staff it, I just want to make sure we're being sensitive to the, to the needs of our staff, and if we're booking up the summer with events, I just, are you confident, you know, you're not going to have to be denying a majority of time-off requests? I mean, I want your staff to be able to take some time away during the summers, come with their families, and I don't want to overly be, be overly burdening the department to the point that they're only able to take vacation in the winter.
Sure. It would be another holiday weekend that we would be asking our staff.
It would be another holiday weekend that we would be asking our staff to provide protection for this event, but however, it is a smaller footprint. It's nowhere near the ask that Art Spitz and Eats is, so I'm confident we wouldn't be denying vacations, but that, those are conversations that I've had with Mr. Woods, as far as another holiday weekend for police service.
Okay, well, I guess, you know, if we move forward this year, I would just, you know, really appreciate you keeping us informed on that. If folks are feeling a pinch and feeling that we are overtaxing our resources in the summer, that's something to consider going forward, but open to the concept.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woods. I didn't see anything about fireworks. No fireworks, huh?
There is no, there is no fireworks. We have, our history with fireworks and special events, I think that would create more need of police support and issues, and I would recommend against us adding fireworks to this event. And I will say that I think the history of this event has not had any issues or problems historically, and I really do think it will bring a festive atmosphere, and I will also join the police. The Woods family has not had a summer vacation in its history, so really, so we'll be joining, you know, the folks that do work with us. So anyway, we're happy to be on vacation next week, and I thank everyone for allowing us to present tonight, so thank you.
I hope everybody skis. Thank you. Commissioner Collo?
Thank you. So, Mr. Frey, can you tell us what the timeline is then, from here on out, if we're having this discussion tonight?
So, oh, thank you. Assuming that the permit is ready, that we presented back at next week's meeting, as Mr. Woods has indicated, the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors has a meeting this Wednesday, and he's making the ask of the DDA to, really, to cover our expenses that are associated with that. There's some other details that we're working out that really, to comment about that, because we don't have all the information in. So, but that's, Mr. Woods, I think, wants to have a committal so he can secure additional sponsors, and so that's his timeline and ask that he's asking of us. I think it's what he wants to convey to the DDA board, and I don't think there's anything to the contrary here, is that this would be deemed favorable, and that will be helpful to him, because as he mentioned in the beginning of his comments, that the DDA board will be asking, you know, what sort of, is the city in favor of this, are they committed to moving this project forward? So normally, I am a voting member of the DDA board, but I will be in Lansing with a few of you at the league conference, but I'll send an email out to the fellow board members and asking their consideration of this event. So just a matter of gauging, you know, what your level of interest is, and now that you have an idea of what the footprint is and what the size and scale of this event is, that it's not anything that's too onerous on our staffing levels and to provide adequate support to make this a successful event, so.
Okay, so great. So without hearing objections tonight, you'll telegraph to the DDA that we are in support of this in theory?
I will convey that through an email, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. I wrote this down. Notwithstanding anything further, for the betterment of our fine community, I will entertain a motion to adjourn in the honor of our mayor. Commissioner Collins? I. Move adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Dubak. Any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Collo?
I'd just like to congratulate you, Commissioner, Madam Mayor Proton Macy. A wonderful meeting, and you ran it with the best of them.
Well, you know, I could tell they trusted me by how much they put up this agenda. Let me just add, let me just add. All right, thank you. All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Motion passes. We adjourn. Do it again. Thank you.